Counsel chambers, if you would now please join me in rising for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call please.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, then a, I think we have a request for an alteration of the full agenda.
Your honor, my clients are requesting that, I believe it's item 18, the resolution regarding approval of the Majestic Lakes Plan Development be removed from the agenda at this time.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Do we talk about that now?
Just say we, that would include removal of that as well.
Oh, okay, alright. Also has come to my attention, along with item number 18, we will remove item number 19.
We need to table that.
Is table, okay.
So we'll get to that.
We'll be technically tabled, okay, alright. We're good with the full agenda with removal of number 18, and so would look for a motion in that regard.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Yeah, move this to item number 15, Public Hearings and Related Action. Open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statutes, section 18-2715. And Randy, we'll look to you to pick that up, please.
As the mayor mentioned, this is required by statutes. Every six months statutes require the Citizens Advisory Review Committee to meet and review the operation of the cities, LV840 program. And the members of Citizens Advisory Review Committee are Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangles, Aaron Otten, Jan Heinspar, and Kathy Means. I serve as an ex-officio non-voting member of that committee. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee, or CARC, met on June 6th, and their report is in the agenda packet, along with their checklist. As noted in the CARC report, they found that our economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and voter-approved economic development program. They actually looked at, we had several things on our agenda, the first of which was the review of the financial statements of the LV840 Economic Development Fund. And on April 30th, we had about $477,000 in that fund. $356,000 of that was paid in May for that service on the LV840 bonds that went for the natural gas pipeline. So you can see from that, we're building up a little money in that fund. We could do a small LV840 project now, $100,000 range or so. That will continue to accumulate a little bit of extra money until the last year of the program in 2020 would be when we would last levy the property tax authorized by voters. Gave an update on the gas line I just mentioned, that's in place and can be gasfied if needed. And we also gave an economic development update, and Andy talked about the focus being on the housing shortage in the area, and we have a number of housing projects underway, and we expect to see more houses being built this fall and next spring. And as I mentioned, the CARC found that our program was in compliance with the budget and voter-approved economic development plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Andy? Comments from the council? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to make a comment. And if not, I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number 16 in our regular agenda. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5475 approving the zoning change from a agricultural district to RR rural residential district on property generally located a half mile east of Highway 35 on Benjamin Avenue. Ordinance number 5475 passed on first reading at the June 5th, 2017, city council meeting. And Val, would you refer, I'm looking for a motion, I'm sorry.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for consideration ordinance number 5475.
Second. Okay. Alright, now Val, would you refresh our memories on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This, like you said, is about a half mile east of Highway 35 on Benjamin, and it's approximately about a mile west of our extraterritorial jurisdiction. But the comprehensive plan does have this still categorized in the future land use map as agriculture. So the RR zoning is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. However, there has not been any 20% protest, so you can still pass it on five votes tonight if you so choose. And just to let you know, number 17 depends on if you pass this item on second and third reading, otherwise that will have to be continued to be tabled, because that is the plat that goes along with this zone change. If there's any questions.
Question for you, Val, because I thought I heard you say that it's like a mile from the exterior of our zoning jurisdiction.
Approximately, yes.
Approximately.
Yeah.
So if it were outside of that, the county regulations would take into effect, and that's 40 acres to a house?
I believe so. This is Stanton County. I'm not as up on Stanton County as Madison, but I know Madison County is 40 acres for a residential.
And if it were, if we're just considering the zoning change here, what would be the minimum lot size that they would need for it not to have come before us?
20 acres is what is the minimum lot size in agriculture zoning for a home site.
Okay. And I believe the request is for approximately four and a half?
Something like that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This is a house that's already established, right? There's already a house there and outbuildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Langy, to answer your question.
What's the question?
Huh?
Nothing.
I just had two lot splits approved in Stanton County this morning, both in agricultural zoning. One was about 5.3 acres and the other one was a little over three. The three-acre one was a little different situation because it's a tower. It's not a residential lot, but the five-and-a-half acre one, or whatever it was, was a resident, an existing residence much like this.
Okay. Comparability, was it on a major, what is potentially a major, I mean Benjamin Avenue's a major thoroughfare?
Probably not.
Good.
Right now, it's a county road.
Okay. The one that you were talking about?
The one that I was talking about, yeah.
Again, that's my biggest concern, is that we continually seem to develop ourselves into these problem situations a few years down the road. And everybody says, well, it's never going to happen. And when we turn back around and we see where we ultimately end up running utilities and that out there, and then suddenly we have the complaints that, you know, I have this super big bill here now. So, and granted, I know it's existing residents, but again, my question is, why not 20 in lieu of the 4.6?
Well, you have a willing buyer and a willing seller on the 4.6 acres. I don't think you have either if we try to get 20 acres.
You don't think or you don't know?
I, well, I don't know for sure. I don't think they would. I guess the other thing that comes to mind with the comprehensive plan, I wonder if it isn't so far out, so close to the edge of your zoning jurisdiction, they, you know, it makes sense for it to be agricultural right now, but what will it be in 20 years?
Understand that. I guess that's really not the point that I was debating as to whether it should be a larger parcel, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance 5475 on second reading, council members Granquist, Merrill, Claussen, Murin, Jackson, Faust, File, voting against the ordinance, Councilman Langy, ordinance 5475 carries on second reading.
Your honor, if I may, I'd like to request that this council suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on third reading. They do have a sale pending with a tentative closing date of this Friday. If they can get everything, you know, this would be one of the last steps involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5475 on third reading. Second.
Were there discussion on that? Seeing none, please vote.
Voting in favor of suspension of the rules and approving ordinance 5475 on third reading, council members Granquist, Merrill, Claussen, Murin, Jackson, Faust, File, voting against the, a motion, council member Langy, ordinance 5475 carries on third reading.
Okay, moves us to item number 17. Motion to consider resolution number 2017-32 approving the final plat and subdivision agreement of Bauer Meister's Benjamin Avenue addition. Resolution number 2017-32 was tabled at the June 5th city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration, resolution 2017-32.
We would have to, prior to that, take the, have a motion to take it off the table.
No, I will make the motion, take it off the table.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, now would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
To consider 2017-32.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, council, comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 201732 is adopted.
Okay. Item number 18 has been removed from the agenda, moving to item number 19. This is consideration of ordinance number 5478, amending section 24-160 of the city code to clarify said section related to the parking of trailer trucks, et cetera, on the street. Ordinance number 5478 passed on first reading at the June 5th meeting. It's come to my attention that there's been a request by Chief Meisner to table this for the time being, for a time of further evaluation. So with that, I would entertain a motion to table.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Okay. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion to table carries.
Item number 20, for motion to consider ordinance number 5479 to create the position of public safety director, and amending section 2-66 of the city code to define and clarify the appointment and supervision of a public safety director. To amend section 2-103 to place the office of risk manager under the direction and control of the public safety director. To amend section 2-151 to include public safety director as a position subject to the Civil Service Act.
I'd offer for consideration, ordinance number 5479.
Second.
Okay, and I'll open a little bit on this, and then ask Clint to describe the process of creating the ordinance. This is a continuation of the discussion we had a couple weeks ago in which we are making a shift at the administrative level to decouple the public safety director role from the city administrator's role, and fully implement a model that was put in place regarding public safety years ago, but not fully implemented. I think in so doing, this model allows for the community to benefit from a public safety director being engaged in long-term planning for public safety agencies, and helps us be ready to adapt and adopt best practices in terms of communications technology. And I think it's something that will benefit the community over the long term. So I'll open with that. Clint, if you want to talk a little bit about the creation of the ordinance to fulfill this?
Well, what the, thank you, mayor, what the ordinance basically does is it takes and inserts, as it relates to public safety, it takes and inserts the, what would be the newly created public safety position between the police chief and the fire chief respectively, and the city administrator. And so we could get down in the weeds on that if there's any particular discussions. The other thing that it does is it takes and it takes the provisions that are in the Nebraska Civil Service Act, it sort of takes them and lays them over top of the newly created position. And again, we can talk about any specific questions that anybody might have about that.
Okay, thanks, Clint. Any discussion, questions, comments from the council?
The question I do have is in enclosure 20. And Clint, maybe you can answer this for me. It's an ordinance to the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to create the position of public safety directors. You read on down under powers and duties, it starts talking about city administrator. Should that read public safety director, or am I reading this incorrectly?
Are you, well, we've got a, you're talking about just in the, in the short title up there?
The ordinance number 5479.
Yeah, you're talking about the old cap stuff up there at the top?
Uh, no, if you go down to section 2-66, powers and duties.
Okay, what that is, what that is, and you look, that we did a couple of things there. 2-66 talks about what the powers of the, of the city administrator are, and there's a couple of things where we, just since you're in the neighborhood, we've cleaned up through the shoe, where you see the underline. The other part of that is in subsection G, where it talks about, just clarifying, and that's probably a good question. In order to, to fully accommodate this, the, the laying of the Civil Service Act on top of there affects, if you look to subparagraph G of that, it talks about the, and we're talking about the powers of the city administrator. The city administrator recommends to the mayor and council the appointment and dismissal of all department or division heads over which here she exercises direct supervision who are not subject to the Civil Service Act. There is also, to fully implement what the, what the, what the mayor was talking about, there's also a civil service commission that, regulations that are being accommodated tomorrow, so, that would be accommodated at a meeting tomorrow. But what this does is, right now, if you're going to, for everybody other than the police chief and the fire chief, the appointment process is, for all of those other department and division heads, is under subsection G. This just clarifies that the public safety director is, that would be created is, as the Civil Service Act directs, it would say that if there is an appointment of a, of a public safety director, that is made by the mayor. That is, that is made by the mayor as the, is the appointing authority, but that appointment is cloaked in the Civil Service rules. So there's a process at the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission adopts, generates a name, gives that to the mayor, name or names as many as three, gives that to the, to the, to the, to the city administrator who is deemed to be the appointing authority, and then that city administrator is the one that actually appoints a public safety director. Similarly, if there was discipline or whatever, just as subparagraph G talks about, the city administrator recommends to the mayor and council the appointment and dismissal of all department or division heads except for those subject to Civil Service Act. So the appointment is handled under Civil Service Rules where the city administrator makes that appointment. Dismissal is by the city administrator with, with the appeal possible to the Civil Service Commission, not to the city council.
I knew there was a simple answer to that question.
And you didn't get it from me.
I got it from, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to create the position of public safety director, and amending section 2-66 of the official city code to define and clarify the appointment and supervision of a public safety director. To amend section 2-103 to place the office of risk manager under the direction and control of the public safety director. To amend section 2-151 to include public safety director as a position subject to the Civil Service Act. To provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5479 carries on first reading.
Your honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance 5479 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5479 carries on second and third.
Okay. Item number 21, for a motion to consider resolution number 2017-36 confirming the mayor's appointment of Andrew Colvin as city administrator.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2017-36.
Second.
Okay. And again, as a continuation of discussion started a couple weeks ago, this is part of a restructuring at City Hall, making Andy's appointment to city administrator. Andy served us as economic development director for a year, and has done a commendable job, and has varied experience in the administrator's role, past experience in the City of Vermillion, along with educational background in the field, and I think will approach the job with creativity, vision, collaboration, and will serve the community well for years to come. So with that, I'd open it up to any other discussions or questions or comments on this. And if none, pass for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 201736 is adopted.
Item number 22, look for a motion to consider approval of employment agreement with Andrew Colvin for the position of Norfolk city administrator.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Again, this is, there's one written agreement for, of all city employees, and that's in the administrator's position. This agreement sets the salary classification for the administrator, and the benefits associated with the job, which are all laid out before you. Any questions or comments from the council? No discussion, I'd ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, we move to the last segment of our agenda, and it's public comment period, so it's a time in which any citizen can come forward and have the floor, so to speak. Evening, sir. Have you sign in, please?
Pardon?
Can I have you sign in on the sheet in front of you?
Right here.
Yep.
Evening. Okay. I'm a retired farmer, and I live in Pierce, and I see in the paper that they were wanting to tear the water tower down. I had a letter in the Norfolk paper a while back, and there was very many people that I ran through that even read that article. My opinion is, it's a historic site. I would like to see them put an elevator going up there. Anybody that could go up, handicapped, retarded, disabled, anybody that crutches, anybody that's old and has bad knees and can't, can't go up all the stairs. And then increase the walkway around it, so people could walk around there and see 360 degrees. And you'd always be up there on the walk-around with the tank on the backside of you. It ain't like you're standing out there all by yourself, all alone. There'd be a limit on how many people could go up there at a time. It would have to have insurance, and it would have to be made so nobody could, no way, fall off up there or jump off. I know it'll probably cost quite a bit, but I know there's money around, because I'm a farmer, and my folks came from Germany, started from the ground up. And inflation is what made a lot of people rich. A quarter section of good land now, with irrigation on it, is a million dollars right there. And some of those people didn't have to work for it, they just made it on inflation. We're robbing from the future generation with this inflation. This is something we could leave to the future generation. It's a historic site, and the scenery from up there would change from sunrise to sunset, four seasons of the year. It would always look different. It would be great for somebody, if one of the kids in the family has a birthday, to take them up on a tower, if they, if they go. It's something they would never forget. They'd always remember that, come back years later, and they'd want to go up there again and look around, see what changes there are, or anything like that. And for some people, it would be a challenge to go up there. Some people are scared of heights. And as far as secure, we know that water tower is a secure structure. It held all that water up there. And you wouldn't have a lot of people coming in at one time. You wouldn't have a traffic problem or anything like that, because you could, someplace you'd have to set a limit on how many can be up there at a time, or something like that. They wouldn't have crowds, you wouldn't have to worry about a lot of traffic on the street up there at one time. And eventually, if somebody wanted to, possibly they could put telescopes. They do have a lot of different sites, they have telescopes, you put a quarter or something in, and you can see way off in the country. in and you can see way off in the country. Norfolk is the only one around here that would have anything like that. I don't think there's any city around here that has anything like that. I've been on the internet, and you'll see out east, where they had these water towers built out of stone and machinery, where people have built a house up on there, which would be kind of unusual. But I would like to have it for young people to go up and see, old people that are disabled but still want to do something and can't go on a trip, but can't afford none, they could go up there and see just as much or more than they would on a trip, and they'd still be local. I guess there's just nothing like that around, you know, for, for a lot of people retarded or handicapped, that aren't into sports or nothing, it'd be something for them to do. And it'll always change, it's always changing, and a lot of people want to go up the first time, they'd be wanting to go up again someday. Thank you for listening to me.
I have a question for you, are you aware of any towns or cities across the country that are currently doing that, as you looked on the internet, for existing water towers?
I'm sorry, my hearing is really bad.
Are, are you aware of any towns or cities across the country that are currently doing this for, for their, their metal water towers?
No, well, not a metal water tower, but I was on the internet where they built just a metal tower.
Yeah.
And that looked scary, up there. But this here, if you went up on an elevator, it wouldn't be scary like that. But once you get up there on a walkway, like I said, the, the tank would always be on one side of you, and then you could just look out, and you could walk around it. It would have to be made secure, and it would be made so nobody could possibly jump off of it or anything like that. As far as other things, who would take charge of, any charge going up there, or how you'd pay for it, or anything like that, I would think possibly the city, if they did that, they could have, the city could give out, or people could buy tokens or something, and then any dealership could buy a bunch of tokens and pass that on to the customers when you spend a given amount of dollars or something. So it wouldn't be any business, certain business tying it up for themselves.
Thank you very much.
And you could still put your Norfolk sign on there, possibly veterans or something like that. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Max. I, I know we've had discussion before, and it's a big idea, and we always appreciate big ideas. It would be interesting to know if communities anywhere across the country have converted their old water towers into observatories.
Water towers, but in South Dakota, they do have platform towers that go up in different viewing areas, be about the same principle.
They have one at Mahoney Park.
Do they?
Dennis, would you, maybe you could give us a little background on the water tower, and it's, it's not been in use for some time, and, and plans the city has for it?
The water tower functionally has only been used for trying to shave a little power since the late nineteen nineties, just before two thousand. With the additional reservoir out northwest of the community, hydraulic gradient is about, our water system is about ten feet over the top of that tower, so if you just let it float on the system, it would overflow continually. It's currently being used as a, I call it an antenna farm. That's its primary use right now, or the primary revenue that we're getting from it. Water towers function for that, but they're not real conducive to that. You've got a lot of, a lot of bulk there that needs painted and kept up, for not a lot of space for those types of things. Our plans are to build a self-supporting tower, a little bit to the southwest of there, just north of the NBD substation, that would serve to be the backbone for the city's communication system, probably Region eleven who we partner with. We've got one cell company on the tower at this point in time, and a couple of internet users, we would have, we would have conversations with them as to whether they wanted to continue to rent space from us, and after the new tower's up and operational, we would take the, the water tower down.
Timeline for that, for communications tower?
Uh, our goal at one time was for October of twenty seventeen, probably a realistic goal now is probably more like twenty, October of twenty eighteen. We've kind of gotten a little behind schedule on moving that forward, in that the big elephant is, is what does the future communication system look like for the police and fire, who are the primary users, public works and some others that are secondary users, and we've just hired a consultant to help us with that process. We kind of, we're good at knowing the radio as far as pushing it to talk, but how to make that happen, and what the, the best way to get the newest, the latest technology is, is a little more of a challenge if you're not doing that on a daily basis.
All right, appreciate that.
Nick Lyle is, is spearheading that effort on behalf of the city's staff, so.
Yeah, and we've talked about that in the last few weeks. Any other questions, comments, council on this? Any other public comments at this time?
Thank you for having me.
Evening.
I got a couple of comments. First of all, I'm not very happy about a safety director for this town here.
Can you give us your name, sir? Can you state your name, please?
Fred Bader. I don't think we need it, but it is what it is, I understand it perfectly. I see we had a survey, because, had a survey to find out how bad our streets are? Are you kidding me? These streets are terrible, but it didn't just happen yesterday, it's been going on for a long time. We need to start putting some money into these streets and take care of them. You know, I don't see them out, see them out patching in a lot, but I don't see anything else being done. I see them replacing, we need to replace them too, I understand it perfectly. Couple more of the comments that I got, and then I'll leave you alone. Cowboy trails. If we put as much money in, in these streets as we do in these cowboy trails, we'd have something made. And, and why do they call them cowboy trails? I've never seen a cowboy out there, I've never seen a cowgirl out there, I've never seen a horse out there, I've never seen a cow out there. I've seen some jackasses out there, and some horses asses out there, but that's beside the point. I guess my comments are that we need to start putting some money into these streets and start taking care of them, they're in terrible shape. Any streets you go on, I don't care where it's at, if you want to test that theory, tonight go home and put up a map of Norfolk, throw a dart at it, and wherever it hits, go look at those streets and see what they are. They're in terrible shape. And it's not, it's something that just hasn't happened, it's been going on for years and years and years. I guess if I have any more to say, just, I'd like to see something done with them.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Counsel, questions, comments?
I think as far as, I understand what you stand about the trails, when I first became a city councilman, that was one of the things I had in mind, was to address the trail issue. And once I started doing a little investigating and figured out where the money comes from the trails, I realized that it's such a small portion that the Norfolk taxpayers actually pay in comparison to the overall project. That money is all federal grants, and I kept saying, well, that's tax dollars too, but the other side of that coin is, yeah, it's a federal grant, but if they don't use it for people here in Norfolk, then another community's going to take that money and do something with it to benefit their community. And these trails, when they are all said and done, will be a real neat addition to Norfolk, because they will attach, and you'll be able to go from one end of town to the other, and from side to side, and never leave the trails, you'll be able to walk, ride your bikes, whatever you want to do, and not have to worry about traffic. So the trail system, all in all, is, is a really deep program. The cowboy trail, which you addressed, is funded by the NRD, it's not Norfolk tax dollars. That's all I got to say about that.
Good comments, councilman, anyone else? I, the streets, always a challenge, when, you know, I think all of us, as we're out talking to people here about streets quite a lot, and that's a common challenge among upper Midwest communities. I think we, there's a will and a desire to do more, and I think we can do more, and I think we've had discussions internally about, you know, obviously we operate within budgets, but being creative about dedicating more resources to street maintenance and replacement, resurf, resurfacing, one of the things I'd like to see is a public input component integrated into how we score our streets projects and allow the public to have some say in which streets are prioritized for maintenance and reconstruction. So I agree with you, sir, in, in a lot of ways, we, we can and need to do better, and it will be a priority moving forward. So, anyone else during the public comment period? If not, concludes this meeting of the city council, good evening.